Okay, it's uh.
I'll get a hold of Todd.
Yeah, it's seven o'clock the eighth of April. There's Todd. Uh, we'll call a meeting to order. And if I may have a roll call.
Ron Jones.
Yep.
Tom Johnson.
Here.
Debbie Darless.
Here.
Tom Sargent.
Here.
Patrick Blair.
Here.
Uh Seth Halen and Colette Willows.
Yeah.
Here.
I haven't seen Seth up here yet, so.
He emailed me. He's just gonna be a little late.
Okay, that'll work. Uh, okay. Has everybody had a chance to go over the minutes? From my March?
I don't remember seeing them. Oh, I didn't read them.
Yeah.
They're in the, it was in the big bulk email. There was a lot of files in there.
Oh, that one. Okay, I see, I see it. Thank you, Colette.
Alrighty. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Second please.
I haven't had a chance yet. Yeah, and I haven't had a chance to read them, so I'll stay.
Okay, who, who seconded that?
Uh, Tom Sargent.
Okay, very good. Okay, can I have a, a motion to accept the agenda, I guess?
I'll make that motion. Okay, go ahead, Pat.
Yeah. That's Pat. I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to accept.
Alrighty. All those in favor signify please. Have a second. Somebody do a second.
Yeah, Tom did.
I'll do it.
Alright, just signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion is carried. Uh, I think, uh, the next thing we do is, uh, go to Todd or Mike, whichever one you. Yeah, something to say, Mike first, or just go to Todd? We lost Mike.
You lost Mike? Alright, well then, now come on.
Go right to you.
I'm gonna share my screen real fast. So we're gonna go over a couple, a few things. So the first thing I'm gonna show you, oh gosh, what's this?
Thanks, thanks, Todd.
What do you guys see?
Guy with a broken arm.
Yeah, the statue. Oh, perfect. Okay, so this is, this is just the draft website, so when, this is gonna be like the summary of the plan.
I'm not seeing anything, Todd. Hang on a second.
Uh-oh.
And I don't know if it's my computer.
Does everybody else see it? How about that?
I see it.
I see it.
Yeah, I've got it too.
Is your computer, Todd?
It, it probably is.
Um, I, well. I sent, we sent the link. I, I, I mean, I gave it, I sent a link out with, to Lauren, I think she sent it out. Maybe you can just use that. It, it came up?
I got it, yeah.
Okay, great. Alright, so this is just the draft, but when you go into this thing, so you'll have all the different sections of the plan up here, right here, I'm showing you. And then there's like a brief introduction. When you click on this button when the plan is done, this will take you to the whole plan, right? Not just this, you know, this plan. Have you guys had a chance to look at this?
Yep.
Okay, so, you know, it talks about what a plan is, and it talks about the, you know, public engagement we did, and it shows you where Brimfield is in relation to 300 miles away. Population trends, just the brief stuff, and then it starts to bring you to some of these maps. So these maps are actually interactive, so when I say interactive, there's more to it than just what I'm gonna show you. You could actually take this and you can blow it up more if you wanted to. Uh, and you know, the streets will come in, and it says draft only because it's a draft, and we don't want people to think this is the final product, you know? Um, so then you can keep scrolling down, and then the housing age will show up, so that comes up onto your screen as you scroll. Um, you can, you can, you can, again, you can zoom in on some of these part, on individual parcels if you want. Um, then I keep, I keep scrolling down, and now I have some natural, national, natural resources. And this is the topography map, which, you know, is, it is what it is. And then you have your flood, floodplain and wetlands, so you have, you have access to see what that is. You have your water quality maps, where you, where, where the goodwill water is, and that, and that kind of thing. And then you keep going, and then when you have goodwill water, you have good, you have potentially high, high level of, you know, probability or possibility of contamination, so that's what this map shows. And then you have soil conditions and hydro soils are, you know, soils that have high water tables, so, you know, they're, they're not as good for septic, and they're also not great for basements either, but doesn't necessarily mean you can't have, you know? Uh, and then industrial operations. So this is showing where all the oil and gas wells are. These are kind of the maps we've shown, all the different plans. And then culture resources. The, the COE plan will have a, a better map showing you, you know, it's because there's numbers on all of these, might be hard to see. But the number, but there's a hard copy, that list will be there for everybody. Um, then we have the conservation suitability, and this is, this is, again, showing some of the conservation stuff. We just, we got the blow up. The, the map, the hard map and the plan will have more information for you, and I think Gail is working on providing that information on this map. For example, now I'm gonna back it out a little bit. And then community resources, this is parks and schools and things, so we have, um, we have that information here proposed, but then we have functional class of roadways. We have traffic, so this is the, this is the traffic level map that shows you what, um, that we're showing for daily trips for different roads. You scroll some more, here's, here's some, this is prepared by AMETS now, the Akron Metropolitan Area Transit, uh, Study. Um, who, who covers our area in Summit County, and they show what they consider to be good conditions, and they, they, they show their, you could, the poor, I guess, uh, are fair. Uh, the different rating conditions, and of course, it's when they take, when they did it, so this map was created in 2020. Um, capital improvements, so this is, this is primarily, when we talk about capital improvements, this is primarily talking about road improvements. So now the public can actually see them. I don't know if I can click on these. Ah, I can't. So, you know, and they can actually click on these, and I'll go over here, number two, for example, and you can see what it is, you know, it's a, it's, you know, where it's located, so just a resurfacing repair project. This, this project here is only thirty, I shouldn't say only, but $371,000, it's gonna be done in 2023, so now they have, kind of have an idea when things are gonna be done. Here's the number four. Um, again, you can, it's, you know, it's on state route 43, um, for resurfacing and repair, this project's gonna be done in 2024, and it's gonna be $800,000. So, yeah, number one, this is the interchange, I believe. Um, roadway minor. Now, hold on, where's the interchange? That should have been the interchange, right? Yeah, that should be the interchange. I'm surprised it's, that there's not more, there might be more information. Oh, there's five, I see, there's five tabs here, so. Then 2021, this is the interchange improvements, $9.9 million is gonna be spent, and here you can click on this tab, and it talks about more information um, related to that project, and there's a, here's part of 76 being, um, you know, I guess, reviewed or, or processed, however you wanna call it. And so, and this kind of, this kind of is in the way a little bit, but it's showing you the different, the different things that are going on. So anyways, so you have a map, so now you have information for the public and for yourselves, when some of these things are happening. A lot of times you sit there and say, well, when is this gonna happen? Now you have a map that tells you, you know? Um, and then the, the, you know, the economy section, we have that ready, really, sort of ready. Um, but Gail, Gail's taking all this information from my, I, I give her stuff in Word, and then she converts it to this InDesign program to make it sleek and more, more attractive, but it's a long, she's, she's not, she's not feeling well, and so she's not able to attend, and wasn't able to get that done for us today. But then we have agriculture, we have the existing land use map, so here's the existing land use map, and again, I can blow this up. And I can, I can actually sit down, I can, I can pull this around if I want to pull it around, and I can pick out lots if I wanna pick out a lot. And it'll tell me, it'll tell me the parcel number, how big that lot is. And, um, that's it for now, but I think we can add to this. We can do whatever we want with these, we can do with whatever we want. We can add, you know, if there's a structure on there or not, we could add square footage of that structure if we want. I mean, it's really a matter of getting, sitting down with Mike, and when we get closer to finalizing this map, to find out what he wants, because it's really easy to add data to these maps. So if I close out, I can, and I scroll back a little bit, I mean, I can, I can go all over the, I can go anywhere in the township. So I can click on that parcel, for example, and it tells me, again, the acreage is 8.7 acres. This, let's see, I'm gonna, wanna look at this piece, it's, it's showing as agriculture, 78 acres. You know, looking at this, this is showing as commercial, and it's telling me that's 25, 25.65 acres of commercial. But we can add by square footage, we can even add, yeah, I mean, maybe you don't want this, but you could even add the, the dollar value of some of these things, you know, or, or, you know. Well, the camp, like the CAMA data, for example, that's saying that the CAMA data is 467. So 467 in the auditors is a certain type of commercial, so we could actually say what 467 is, and maybe it's auto repair, maybe it's a, a, a shopping mall, maybe it's a hair salon, you know, it'll, it'll basically break out what those kind of uses are for you. So I just wanted to show you guys that, and I think that's kind of a neat feature to have, that you guys don't have now. Um, then this is the zoning map currently. And then, this is a developable areas map, and there's, it's red, yellow, green, and so just like, just like with a traffic light, the green areas are good because, for a number of different reasons, the green areas have water and sewer, they're not in a wetland, they're not in a floodplain. The yellows may have one or the other, they may have water, or they may have sewer, and they're probably, and they probably are, are good, you know, more than likely, they're not, you know, overrun with, with a floodplain or with a wetland. And then the red areas are areas that don't have any water or sewer, so I'll back that up a little bit. The red areas don't have any water and sewer, or maybe have a floodplain issue, like this is, there's a floodplain issue in here, I believe, for, as an example. And then, you know, when you look at our future land use map, which I don't believe we put up here yet because it hasn't been approved yet, but like these areas where we wanna, you know, we talked about this in the survey, and the survey results said that we wanna maintain that rural area, you know, that rural, a character of the, of the township. These areas, because they don't have water and sewer, when you look at our future land use map, when we make that available, that will, that will show, and it may be in the plan already, the rate, the full plan, but we haven't just yet, we're not sharing this with the public just yet. So what we're saying is, let's just keep these areas as, as agriculture, culture, and then it, it continues to maintain that um, identity, and we've got a nice chunk here too, in, in Brimfield. So it maintains that rural character that people wanna see preserved. Um, and then I go down, here's the, well, here is the future land use map. What am I talking about? Um, so with this map, we, with this map, you know, again, these green areas are the agriculture areas that we're saying are, should stay that way. Obviously, these are the commercial areas, here's town center, these pinks, and these, these pinks, or maybe these are like purple or lavender, maybe, it depends on how you look at it. Other are your industrial areas, and then this, this is town edge, this gray is town edge, that's Kent. Um, so, anyway, so, and then after we get past this, then we have the implementation section, which is the goals, objectives and strategies, and then the recommendations, like how do, how do we actually, who's responsible, and how do we actually get this going? So, you know, making sure this plan is actually implemented, rather than sitting on a shelf. So I think this alone on your website is gonna help the plan stay off the shelf, so to speak, that you guys will have access to it. But again, I, and then, you know, the other thing I can do here is across this top here, that I can just, if I just wanna go, and rather than scroll through the whole document, I can say, well, I wanna see the natural resource, so I can just click straight to it, right? Or I could, now it's gonna load up. Or I could say, I wanna talk about transportation, so it takes us straight there, I wanna do land use and zoning, so it's, it's really user friendly that way too, you can move around pretty quickly through the document. Does anybody have any questions?
Nope, my don't it. Looks pretty good.
No, it, it looks pretty thorough, Todd. I mean, everything looks good. I know we're missing a little bit, but I'd still like to be able to, um, move this on and, and get it to the trustees, if, if zoning is comfortable, because you're only missing a couple pieces, right?
The only thing we're missing is the data, the thing that I apologized earlier is the, uh, the data section for, you know, here, let's go to it. Um, da, 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 oh, no, no. So the only thing we're missing in, in this, in the plan, well, the, the acknowledgement page, you guys are all gonna get acknowledged as, as participating, so there's that page that still needs to be done, but the other thing that, and the other thing we need to do, so in each chapter, we have, you know, like what is the plan in this chapter, but then, like, you know, what is the history and the population projections, so that, so we get all the way down to the if we get down to chapter seven. Whoop, chapter four. And we'll come back to this, I'm just, just shooting down this, three, what Mike's referring to. So in chapter seven, the economic development section, it's done, and it was supposed to be in the document for you before this meeting, but, uh, you know, again, we have maybe a COVID issue, and so it's not in the plan right now. But we do have in the, in, we do have, and we did send out that section in the, um, in the, in the, uh, goals and objectives. So I just gotta find them right here. Okay, so economic development, this is, these are them right here. So we do have the goals and objectives that we have not talked about together, and we'll talk about those tonight. And we can talk about anything else you wanna talk about. I just wanna make sure that this is probably more important, the data and stuff like that, that Mike's referring as a snapshot, a snapshot in time. However, the other thing that, that I told Mike about, that I'm really excited about, we were able to, you know, we've been searching for, you know, what kind of things should we be including in the document? And one of the things that I know Mike and I have talked about quite a bit is just having the tools in the toolbox to work with, and we found, you know, we found a, a good toolbox, and it's got like, you know, it's 20, 23 or 25, um, ways to promote economic development, and they, they include, you know, grants and loans and things like that. The, the JED was mentioned, the CRAs are mentioned, things like that. So now Mike's got 25 things he can pull from, rather than the typical four or five things that were, three to four to five things that we're aware of. So I think that's gonna be helpful. That's what you're not seeing tonight, and I think that was probably the most, one of the, probably the most important thing I wanted to show you out of that document, was those things. Um, I know the trustees wanna see this sooner than later, and I'm only gonna, you know, I'm only moving as fast as you guys wanna move, but, um, if you, how, how would you guys wanna proceed on the document? Do I start from the beginning, or is there any specific areas you wanna see? We'll definitely come back to the economic development section and talk about those, because that's, that's really the only thing new in the document, I think, that you hadn't seen before.
I have a question.
Sure.
Todd, it's Pat. The, the web-based version of this that you started showing us at the beginning, is that gonna be continually and automatically updated?
It, it can be updated very easily, a lot, you know, as far as the data goes, the data can be updated as often.
That's what I'm referring to, you know, like if AMETS comes out with a different study in a couple more years, will that document be updated on a website? In other words, does this, all this work, do, we have an ongoing living history, or once you print it on paper, is it once and done?
No, no, it's, okay, so the document is, you know, basically you, whatever you adopt, it's, now that's the document you're working with. But the document's always supposed to be a living document. So with, with, um, changes to what your goals and objectives, you wanna do, you would definitely wanna do an amendment with, I think, you, it's oftentimes you wanna be presented with new information, so if we're gonna put new information in there, let's say they're doing some different road improvements in the, in the, in the township. Then we wanna say, hey, we, we got these different things coming up, and we're gonna put them in the document. That should be easy. I don't think you need to re-adopt the, the data analysis, because again, the data analysis is the data you use to grow from, but the, what does have to go through for adoption is these, is anything that is a goal and objective and strategy, you wanna change that, or add to those, or remove those, those are amendments to the plan, and that's how you keep the plan alive. But the, what we're giving you now, before, well, this is, this is the, this would be, this would be the document that would be on a bookshelf, right? You know, you'd have this nice, pretty pictures and stuff like that. But the other document is something you guys can pick up, or anybody in the community, rather than having to go get a copy from the, from the, from the town hall, or go online and have to go through, I don't know how many pages this is now, it's pretty, it's, it's pretty long now. Um, they, oh, there's, there's 89 pages to it, so you can just go straight on, straight onto the website and see some of this stuff. And as I said, or showed, where did I put it? Um,
So who does the, who does the updating of the online information?
Well, we can do it. I mean, we, you know, there's technical assistance hours to the township, we have the information, and what's great about, what's great about the online information, the, the map stuff, especially interactive map stuff, it's really easy to, to add and delete information out of there. That's why when I was looking at the dropdowns I was showing you, we could add all kinds of information. I just, you just tell us what you want in there, and we, and we could add it in there, so long it's quote-unquote, the data's available for it.
I see this as a real economic tool that we can use, and I like to see, be able to use it for years.
Yeah, yeah, we should, we should keep it current. I agree. I, I, I don't wanna, I, I, I wasn't sure if you were scared about this, because you're afraid that it would, you're just, this just start to decay, because that's what happens with a, a plan on the shelf. The data decays, where you keep the data relatively alive in the, on the website version, and we can modify that, you know, as far as modifying the book, the book would probably stay the same, but when we go to do a, like a five or seven year update, you know, reevaluation of the plan, what your accomplishments and what you'd like to see done next, then we can swap out that data, put the new data in the book. The data, most of the data's already still on, online, and it should be pretty simple to do and keep up.
Yeah, after we put a lot of this time into this thing, I'd like to see it have a, a useful lifetime of, you know, five to seven years, at least.
Well, it's a, it's a 2050 plan. So it's, hopefully has a useful life for about 29 more years.
Alright.
So it's a living, it's gonna be a living document no matter what, right?
Right, it's, it's, all your plans were always supposed to be living documents. They're never supposed to be stuck in stone. Even your zoning code isn't supposed to be stuck in stone, it's supposed to be a living document as well.
So who has administrative rights then to make the changes?
Well, we, 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 you know, again, we're partners with you guys as it is, right? You're members of regional planning, so it, right now, we can make the changes anytime you ask us to make changes. If it, if there ever became a day where this, where the township became a city, and you had your own planning staff, for, for example, we would just flip the stuff back over to your planning staff to maintain. I mean, if that's what happened in the future sometime. It's not a big deal. I mean, it's really simple to share that data.
So I think, I think yearly we touch base on this. I think, I think we bring the plan up every January or February of every year, and make sure that we, we have everything updated. I don't, I don't want this to, to die out. I think things change year by year, so I'd like to look at it every year, and, and bring it to the zoning board, and then, you know, we could always issue it, have Todd come back on, and.
That's a good idea. Yeah, we. Yeah.
Okay. So you bring any, anything that would be brought to, before the zoning commission for?
I mean, if you want, I could add into the plan that, that part of the implementation process is that every, whether it's January, February or March, we have a set date every year that we, we, we talk about this. That way we don't let it, we don't let it, again, go to the shelf, or disappear out of our minds, you know? So I can add, I can add that.
That's a good selling point for the public who's paid for it, so.
Yes, I agree with that.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, that's a great idea.
So basically, when do we wanna take this to the trustees?
Well, I still need to go over the economic development implementation stuff, if you, make sure you're comfortable with that, but then you guys probably decide what you wanna do with the timing of the trustees.
Okay.
I don't mean to interrupt you, I just, I just want, don't wanna skip some things.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, I, I think we, we had discussed at one time, uh, you know, by June anyway, we would like to present it to the trustees. I guess that would depend upon you.
So is it, uh, hey, Todd, is it like modules, so if there was something that wasn't finished, instead of having bad information, you just wouldn't include it right now?
Well, I, I think we have good information now, and I think, I think the, the rule that, that we, the rule of thumb that planners use is you use the best available data you have. So some things may not be updated at the same time other things are updated, right, as far as the data goes? So you just keep the data you have until you get new data to replace it with, you know? I wouldn't throw it out because, oh, that data was for, that, that was from the 2010 census, so we're gonna throw it all out, you know, and so, because it's old. But you can, you can, like I said, you just, you just process through things as you get new data, you add it to the list, and you, and you, and you put it into the, uh, into the information we're providing to the public.
Well, I guess what I was asking is, is there a way, if like, if you knew something was wrong, you can block it from access until you get it fixed, and then?
Oh, well, sure. I, I'm sorry, I thought, I thought you were talking about data got, got old and stale, and now we don't wanna.
No, I, I was thinking, like, if, uh, in the interest of getting it out there, if there's things that we haven't completed yet, could those be blocked off until we get it completed, but not at the sacrifice of, you know, uh, delaying this thing going online?
Mike, I could, look, can I ask Mike a question, man? So Mike, if they were to approve what they've been given so far, the only thing they haven't seen is the economic development section, and we, and we're gonna talk about the other half of the economic development section. Um, with the, with, I could, I could get that to you probably next week, you know, uh, medical help, uh, considering I probably could, I could get the rest of this to both the, both the zoning board and to, the zoning commission and to the trustees with that other information, and then, do you think the trustees will want, do this in one meeting, Mike, or do you think they'll do it in two?
I think they're gonna do it in two, so I think if you get it to them so that they could review it, you know, uh, at least at the next meeting, um, then you're talking about another month, maybe two, right? You know, by the time they process it, so.
Um, so when we say the next, I mean, I don't.
We have the.
Good.
I'd like to get some kind of approval, at least the material now, because we got the school board that, that we wanna give some information to as well on, on Monday's meeting.
Right. So.
And then we can always hold up, it doesn't have to be a full approval, it could be approval of the.
When's the next, yeah. When's the next trustee meeting? Uh, two weeks from yesterday.
Two weeks from yesterday, yep, so that would be 14th.
Okay.
Oh, 21st, sorry, 21st.
21st, yeah, it was the 21st.
So I could, I, we probably should be able to get it to them, you know, they, they've already gotten a draft version, haven't they? Like, have they already gotten a draft?
Yeah, at least I'd like, like to get a draft version over to them.
Yeah, I thought, do we, do we, do we not send them what we had so far?
At least get the draft.
Okay.
I, I, I would, and then, you know, we'd have another zoning commission in between, where that zoning commission can do, do the final draft, or the final copy to the trustees after that, then.
Okay.
So the trustees haven't seen this yet, then?
Not as much as you've seen. They, they have a, a small draft version, but, but not nearly as what you have.
Okay.
So what is everybody's opinion on, uh, uh, sending this, taking this, uh, to the trustees on the 21st?
I think it's a good idea. I agree.
And we can get to start.
Great idea.
Everybody on board with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you need a vote on it, Mike?
Yeah, we'll need a, we'll need a motion and a vote on it too.
Somebody could give me a motion on, uh.
I'll make the motion that we take the draft as we review to the, for their input.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, signify?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion's carried. Okay, so you'll, you'll present it to the trustees on the 21st, what we have of it.
Okay. Did you want me to present the economic development section, or did you wanna do that now, or you wanna do that when you got the rest of the data for that, for that?
I think, I think we oughta review it now and give it to them so they can pick it apart.
You know the better man.
I mean, they, they're not gonna change the maps or anything else, but that's, that's the one piece that they need to look at.
Okay. Alright, so what, you want me to go ahead and just talk about the, the, the one thing we haven't talked about with this, which is the, the, the objectives and strategies?
Sure, go ahead.
We have, we have five, uh, objectives and strategies, and so basically, the, you know, the, the, the main objective is that, you know, we need to capitalize on the accessibility of the township, and so how do you do that? We need to market, you know, the broad-based commercial office research and industrial opportunities that we have, and, and give that a region, not just a local focus, but a regional and maybe even a national focus. Uh, you know, I was.
Todd, can you make, Todd, can you make that a little bit bigger on the screen?
Um, I should be able to.
I was thinking the same thing.
No. That's not it.
Sometimes just control plus works.
What's that? Control what?
Control plus, um, sometimes.
Okay.
Can we do that on our own?
Uh, yeah, oh yeah, we can do that on our own.
Yeah, do you want me to try it again?
My iPad, I can do it, yeah, sorry.
Oh, there's control plus, here. Uh, is that too much?
Uh, it's good for me.
There you go.
That works.
Okay. So this is, the, you, this is the thing I haven't seen, so we're talking about. So this is the this is the thing I haven't seen. So we're talking about the accessibility. We're talking about the marketing, you know. Both the commercial office with industrial opportunities here, taking advantage of I seventy six is our is one of our major routes. Utilize local media and websites to promote the township and accessibility. Market, you know, market quality of life for the township, you know, the township's attributes. And then place emphasis on business retention and creation, business retention and creation and entrepreneurship. So you have the businesses that are already here, you want to keep them. You want to bring new ones in. And then you want to see if you can, you know, through entrepreneurship, maybe you can actually grow and start a brand, you know, new businesses. Here. And so, you know, in the course of, you know, across the top here, we have responsible entities, which would be the economic development. And Portage Development Board. So it'd be, you know, it'd be economic, economic, we're talking about economic development, that would be Mike and. Where's the development board? It could be NEFC. We might be able to add a few more, you know, like NEFC and a few others. You know, this would be an ongoing, never, there really probably will never be a completion date for this because it's just ongoing. The shared collaboration in public-private partnerships, you know, establish a development committee that would include Kent Township and other partners as necessary. You know, this again is to promote the area. And the reason why I mentioned Kent and Township is because they benefit from the jet. And they should be, they should be doing more than, you know, they should be providing services, including economic development and promoting the township as well. Collaborate with the private sector, local businesses, land donors. In planning and decision-making, we kind of did that the last meeting, we had Tom Lucy at the at the meeting. That was an example, and you know, through the division, the decision-making process and the shared vision. So we kind of did something like that. We saw that in action. Then work to leverage other resources that would include but not limited. And I listed a bunch of different entities and agencies. You know, that's not all of them, but that's probably the big ones. So to work with and coordinate with to help, you know, support business opportunities. And then you can see the responsible entities. We listed a whole bunch of different agencies would be responsible entities. And again, this would be an ongoing effort. You know, marketing and housing opportunities to be a great place to live, you know, it's even though. You know, we like to focus on the commercial and industrial, you still want to have, you know, a great place to live as well. And so and that's part and economic development is about quality of life. So encourage new housing opportunities as appropriate. To improve the overall housing stock. Promote the local amenities of Brimfield Park Schools and People, because we you guys mentioned that people are are a great asset to the to the township, which they are. Consider the exterior, you know, and this is consider it an exterior property maintenance code and assistance program for home repair. So that's that's related to, you know, Ravenna and a few others have. Ravenna Township and a few other townships have a home, a property maintenance code, just for the just for the time when some homes become, you go into disrepair. To take advantage of home repair opportunities, you know, such as CBG and CHIP. To help those people who may, you may be lower income or moderate income, who could use the help. To help fix up their their units. And then, of course, this is Mike, the zoning commission, which is you guys, economic development. And you, I put I put our name in there, PCRPC, as because we do the CBG grants, for example. And you know, track, retrain, attract and retain commercial office research and industrial business to the township. You know, so to cor, you know, coordinate suitable locations for non-residential development with appropriate needed and available infrastructure. Target target areas that are already have infrastructure in place. Evaluate areas that maybe brownfields where the business has gone dormant or is gone. I think of the Holiday Inn, for example, that was the intersection of, I think it was the Holiday Inn, I'm not sure, maybe at the wrong hotel, but the wrong name. But the hotel that was there at seventy six and forty three on the north side. It's not there anymore. Promote and market innovative advantages of the Brimfield possession possesses. Consider economic development incentive packages as appropriate, i.e. the CRA, the TIPS, enterprise zones, jets. Assist both current and new businesses with federal and state incentive programs as appropriate. That's that list I was telling you guys about. There's all kinds of incentive programs and grants and loans. Then coordinate potential development of innovative entrepreneurial opportunities, like with Neo Med, Kent State, or other private sector developers. And then the last thing of as far as goals and objectives would be to evaluate periodically Brimfield zoning regulations to ensure they are not limiting or creating impediments to attract. And enhance economic development. And I think you guys are already doing that right now. Now evaluate infrastructure capabilities of Brimfield Township, primarily roads, water, sewer, to make sure. But also include gas, electrical, and broadband, et cetera. And that's to come up collaborative solutions to any needed improvements. And so, you know, so if you're missing, if you, for example. In the in the zoning, in the zoning section. We we would want to periodically make sure that what we're, you know, we are doing or proposing is is actually doing what it needs to do. Sometimes we we promote the certain resident, there are certain districts that were created that I don't think everybody's actually ever really used. So you gotta you gotta go back and reflect on those. But the other one, the infrastructure capabilities, that's the, I think of Howard North on forty three where there is no water in sewer. And there's prime area for commercial development and it's impeded because there is no, there is no infrastructure there. So you know, so you need the help. It's obviously a main corridor and it needs some help. And how do we, how do we work together with whether it's the water races for the county, or whether it's the Kent or some other service provider. To provide water and sewer to those areas. So what's it, what's it missing that it needs to to make it to make it go? And I talk really fast, so I apologize. Hopefully you guys had a chance to to review those.
Yeah. Hey, Todd, this is Colette. Hey, I thought we talked about, you know, working with. Portage County Metro Parks and and, you know, doing something with parks and bike trails. And I don't see that mentioned anywhere in here unless I missed it.
Well, there is a, there should be a section on that. Hold on. Environmental actions.
But that wasn't part of our goals and objectives?
That was just, that was just transferred, that was just economic development. So we have a parks section.
Okay, sorry, okay.
That was, that was kind of like the implementing table. Hold on. I think this earlier, community facilities. There's economic development, environmental, community facilities.
Yeah, objective number two there looks pretty good.
Right, right, okay, there it is. So, okay, so yeah, here's, the objective two is talking about the parks. And coordinating and working together on different things.
Yeah, okay.
Promote, and I said, two point one is promote parks and recreation planning, maintenance, acquisition. We took two point three, we're talking about getting, you work with the park district and obtaining grants. Over here, objective four was public, you know, the public environmental. Down here in four point four, partner with Porch Park District to increase trail and park access. Porch Park District properties within the township. So we do, we do discuss it. Do we need, do you guys think we need to go back through these and and go through these again, just to be to be good with it or or no?
I think I'm good with it.
I'm good with it.
I'm good with it. It looks great.
So what I did, and I apologize, what I did was I went through the table, the implementation table. But actually, that's also right here, too. I mean, this is probably a little easier to read. Like, here's the economic development section. I just read every, everything I just read just right here as well. But that table shows responsible entities and, you know, if there's a timeline or there's completion, the target date, that's where it belongs.
Okay. Fine.
So I think the only thing I need to add for now, from what you guys told me, was you wanted me to add that every year. At least once a year, or beginning of the year, or how are you, I could probably find a way to word that, but I'll add that in there. That you'll do a yearly review of the of the data and of the of the overall plan.
Yes.
I would do it, Todd, is by the end of March. I would, I would give it, you know, at least the first three months of the year. So. You know, the first meeting is usually organizational meeting and and things of that nature. So if you give it by by the end of March of every year.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so we're we're set on taking it to the trustees on around the twenty first then, is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah, so my, my understanding is you're gonna, we're gonna send what we did today and or where we're at right now and send that to the trustees. This document and probably the web-based document. And then we're, and then we're gonna meet at the beginning of May on that last section on on economic development. I think by then, well, we might as well just fill in the acknowledgement tables there, and I think the whole thing will be ready for you. And then we can, then we can send the remainder to the trustees and they could probably adopt it at the end of May. If they wanted to. But I'm not trying to rush you. You guys tell me how much we want to meet.
No, I think, I I. I I think that's good. You know, we could, we could get started on it and. The trustees can start looking at it and, you know.
Yeah, we're gonna have an opportunity every year to make changes.
Yeah.
Yep, so let's, let's get her done and see how it floats.
I'm all for that. Okay. Is there anything else? Any questions or anything for the good of the order?
Uh, no, I just want to let you know that we do have, we do have our first business today. I just learned that we did slam dunk it. I can't tell you who that business is yet, not until the end of May. Uh, it is. It actually is confidential.
Where's it at?
It's gonna be behind Meyer. It's gonna be light industrial.
Oh, okay.
They're building a new building. There's four lots back in there. They're gonna take an eight acre parcel. But their payroll is very large and it's a good company. And and we're we're looking forward to that. I did make, we did some incentives and I'll I'll explain that later. Right now, we had executive session, so I can't discuss the terms of it, but I think we've got them. And then we have one more on the hook that that may may end up taking. So we're gonna see a lot more growth coming in this year.
Okay. I had a question for you on the project at the old golf course up here. What is it, Sunday? Was it Sunny Hills? It was.
Redwood, you mean with Green Hill?
Yeah, where Redwood's going in there.
Yes.
Are are they doing, they're still doing the senior citizen. Thing, are they?
They have it on the plans. So the assisted living center is on the plan still. They didn't take it off the plan. But I haven't heard anything on on that portion of it. Right now, all I have is the. Single-family apartments.
Okay.
You know, so they they look like a single.
In Town Center, I believe we made that, but forty or fifty percent had to be, had to be a commercial or. Or something on that order.
Yeah, I just, they're coming in broke. I'm sorry, my my thing came in unbroken. I couldn't hear the question.
Okay, I I've, I seem to recall that when we rezoned that plat. That it was going to, for Town Center, it was going to have to be. Fifty percent of. Of commercial or something on that order. And then the rest was gonna be.
So. So Redwood is commercial. But they do have a mix with the assisted living center. They did get the approval on that through the Board of Zoning Appeals for both the. And.
Okay. I I just, you know, I just wanted to make.
But I haven't, but I haven't seen anything.
Yeah. But they weren't gonna put a couple lines.
Yeah, I mean. Right, they don't have, I mean, everything meets the code right now. But I can't tell you what the future is gonna, the problem is, is we got the nursing home going in on forty three and Malloy. And, you know, so they pulled a lot of the beds from surrounding communities and pulled them to Brimfield. And I'm not so sure that the developer that that's on the hook. At Green Hills is gonna be able to pull the beds, but we'll see, you know.
Okay.
Uh, Mike, this is Pat. I. You know, I work at the church there for the food cover. And the church, the United Methodist Church was asking if there was going to be a trail or path. From this Redwood development, like over to the cemetery, so people would be able to use as a walking path. To get downtown Brimfield. To like the plaza, because the streets over there had no sidewalks.
Right. Right now, there was sidewalks planned on the original drawing, so there was supposed to be on the outskirts of Redwood. Was a pretty much like a Ryan home development with new homes going around all of Redwood. And then on the back left-hand portion was gonna be an assisted living center. Now, some of that going to change and go back to the Board of Zoning Appeals due to the soil conditions. If you go past where they're digging those retention basins, they're into that bluish gray clay, which you know, you really can't build on. It's either you gotta go. You, once you get into it, you either gotta dig all the way through it, or you gotta go above it and use the GeoGrid. And they're already into it. So I I think there's gonna be a lot of bad soil conditions there. And I know some of it was indicated on the soils reports as the geotech was out there. But I don't think they thought of it as extensive as as we're seeing, you know. So the long story short, the the sidewalks were are in on the master plan. Going through the Redwood into the Ryan Homes and along the assisted living, and there's like little gazebos and walkways planned.
But you, it may change, is what you're saying?
I'm saying it might change, because if you go past and take a look at the. Soils report, and you look at the, what's actually being built there, I'm questioning if we can build anything. On the outskirts of this development based on those soils.
So wouldn't that make more, wouldn't that make more sense than to. Connect the cemetery? To like the middle of the property?
Well, Pat, there's one other thing that that I'm throwing out there that that. I'm in negotiations with Pitts and trying to deal with their attorney, because I'd like to purchase more cemetery land from the Pitts family. So if I could get two or three acres on the backside of that cemetery, I could put walkways in all the way to. Eighteen, you know.
Yeah.
We could do it ourselves.
I'd love to see a couple of acres being bought up for the cemetery.
Well, the problem is, is you're gonna be out, you know, you're gonna be out of space. So we're trying to get something and. And I've been working with with Sue on that and John Dazell. We've been in some meetings with the Pitts attorney, so.
Okay.
Good luck.
Yeah, I'm trying.
Any other questions?
Well, just in in talking about the cemetery, do soil conditions adversely affect the cemetery?
Well, the the, there's two sections that I, from my viewpoint, that we could purchase. The one that would be completely in fill. And I have Dave Ruffner checking what the Ohio revise code is on fills. Because I don't know if there's a waiting period of ten years after you fill, then you can start burying. Because it, you know, that one, it drops off in the back so bad. In that one line there, that, you know, we've got ten, eleven foot of fill in in some spots. The other spot that we're looking at closer to eighteen and getting two to three acres up on that parcel there. We're in good shape. I think the soils are pretty good up there. It's closer to where the homes are now. But as you start working your way down, that that old golf course, the the materials are really, really bad. And it worked out that these these homes that we're building in there, they're slabs, so it's not. You know, we're not digging basements in there, and they could still go with spread footers on them. So, you know, we we can. Try to work around that as best as we can right now. We're not gonna alter the the drawings on Redwood itself, but but the surrounding areas around it might change.
Okay, anything else?
Is this for the good of the order?
Yes.
That is, yes.
So I just, it's not that I need to know this for zoning, but what is our requirement now for septic systems? As far as so much.
So I get this all the time, and Todd is an expert in this. No, I'm just kidding. No, we, Todd and I deal with this with the health, this is a health department issue, and we get this call all the time. There isn't a requirement. As far as I know, unless it changed, Todd, from the county, there's no requirement on the the size of the lot. It's based off the soil conditions. And they want you to do your homework before you purchase a lot with that that septic contact. Them, and they're gonna probably require an engineer to analyze the soils to see what type of septic system you can put. Or maybe you can't put. So what the health department is saying is you could have a three acre parcel, but the the soil might be terrible. So it might, still might not be able to put a septic. So they didn't put a minimum size on acreage. If, did I say that right, Todd?
You're correct. Yeah, they don't, they don't have a a minimum lot size. And whenever I ask for that myself, they yell at me and they say, there isn't one. And, you know, because everybody asks, I I get asked that question all the time. I have a half acre lot. Can I do a septic tank? Well, you're gonna have to work with the health department, you know, I mean, that's, and they. Well, you're gonna have to work with the health department, you know, I mean, that's, and they they basically say you can, it's just, they guess the smaller the lot, the more expensive it gets, is what they tell me. So.
Well, I, one of the reasons why I'm asking is uh, when we moved in here, we were told it was an acre and a half. That was back in nineteen eighty, eighty-one, and. Uh, two of my kids live out of state and have, one has about a third of an acre, has septic. Uh, and then the other one has lots across the street from him that are uh half-acre lots. And they're, they're uh on the coast on that particular one. So I would think their soils aren't real deep where they can go, but. Um, it's just interesting. So that kind of came up in some other conversations and thought, I don't really know what it is.
Well, like Todd said, their systems, I I personally have. One of them, they're, they're like miniature treatment plants. Uh, they're more expensive, and and you could go with smaller lot, or if you're along water or any kind of waterway, the health departments are. Are trying to get those in. They're more expensive, but like I said, they're, they're like miniature plants.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I have another question if I can ask.
Go ahead.
So I may have missed this, so maybe I'm a moron, but. At one time, we had talked about the, our zoning regulations being online. Are they in fact online now?
Yes.
Okay. Would it be a benefit to put a link to it from the, from this new website going out?
You can. Law, I think there's a link on there now. Lauren, I think she's on somewhere. I don't know where Lauren. Oh, she's on a Ryan Gardner. There you go. So can you explain how to get to the link pretty quickly now? Because I know we changed the format on the, on the website.
Yeah, to get to the zoning commission link?
Yeah, no, 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 the, so the zoning resolution.
Oh, yeah. It's still the same. We didn't change the zoning resolution. It's still under, if you click on the zoning tab. Um, and then it will come up on the left-hand side. It's in like the blue. A little blue bar, and it says zoning resolution on it, and you click on it, and then it um brings it up by chapter.
Okay.
We're trying to make it, we're trying to make it more user-friendly, and I know, uh, you know, Nick, Nick was really, really a big on it, along with Sue and Mike. Uh, to get the, this year, to get the website up and running very well, so it's very user-friendly. One thing that we're gonna do with this is this comprehensive land use plan is going, obviously, uh, under economic development. Um, this is gonna be a good tool for everybody. I think, you know, if you're coming across the country and you you're a developer from out of state, you'll be able to view our. Our whole town and uh median uh size income and how many households, and I think it's gonna be very important. And that, and those are key features for for restaurants and things of that nature. They look at that market analysis.
Okay, anybody else?
I have a comment. Um, Todd, did you see the email that we got from Tom Wacey? Have you had a chance to read that?
Are you talking to me?
Anyone.
No, I didn't see it.
He copied some of the zoning commission on it, the ones he had the email addresses. So I don't know if everybody got it.
Yeah.
So, Mike, can we talk about this at the next zoning meeting?
What it, what is this? Because my my connection keeps going. Repeat.
Well, he was talking about following up about our zoning. With the forty-three area on forty-three behind the gas station.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Yep, yep.
Can we, can we add that to the agenda?
We can add that to the agenda. Yep, we'll do that. Absolutely.
Yeah, because it came around five fifty-five this evening.
Funny, why I didn't see it?
Yeah, I know, I almost missed it myself, too.
Okay. What's the next meeting date?
Um, what is that, April? This is April. May, May thirteenth.
May thirteenth, seven o'clock. Okay. Alrighty. Anybody have anything else? Like, nice tat there, Lauren. Nice tat. You just went like that. Okay, anybody else have anything? Alright.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second, please?
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor, hi.
Thanks, Todd, for everything.